I got ready to come searching for you. No.
Cameras live, mics live.
Yeah, like it was a strike.
Well, and there's a dog always running kind of a pit bull like it's running around over like I'm like my dogs are being out like be the bad end of my dogs, but. I actually thought about it, like those chip ones that. Just a mess.
And so then. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I approve the agenda and I'll proceed as presented. Is there any public comment from the previous meeting? Um, recognition and reports will start with our FFA chapter.
At the end of October, beginning of November, we got the opportunity to travel to Indianapolis, Indiana to go experience the National Ethic Day Convention.
Um, on the way to Indianapolis, we got the opportunity to go to corn house. Um, some of the things, um, on the outside of building, they changed the kitchen area and the space floor. And inside it was on Gloria with the basketball and.
Uh, also inside there was the pictures of each year they've done the outside business. You could see every time you've done it a little bit for it. And I think this here, the theme of water and the best waters in the world. We also enter this stuff at Green Manufactory. Um, it's a family run grain bin manufacturing stand. And they make as many parts of the green as they can, so they don't have to rely on other companies to produce whatever.
This is probably one of my bigger, uh, places to tour as far as manufacturing. You get to see them cut out pieces, uh, and then it goes down a table and they'll, you know, they might cut the holes out here, go down a table and it puts the holes or creases in it. And then it'll turn it around and put holes, creases in the other side. Then it might wind up being the root part of the green bin. And a lot of it is open where you actually get to see some of that stuff. Uh, it's truly amazing. One of the ways they retain workers is to rotate them shift wise. Um, some of you guys may extend in the same shift place for all day and some of them might work through a quarter to four rotations just so they don't get bored with taking pieces of metal and punching out a hole, taking a piece of metal and punching out a hole. So they, they're pretty impressive. They talk about how they, uh, have worked to keep people, uh, they now have a hospital. Excuse me, they have almost 700 employees and they have a hospital onsite. Or somebody has to go to the doctor, they just clock out, go to the doctor, come back and, um, it's pretty impressive what they've done to make their employees.
The second day I was with the stop the cat farm museum, um, this was personally my favorite. They had, uh, they had the very first piece of food they were manufacturing, including, I don't know if you're aware of it. Um, also they had a video presentation that was in this actual, uh, government, it was like, uh, that's a government. You walk to one side and probably snap fifty people and you all got there. And then there was also like, uh, simulators they do in there, like would actually put up something for the manufacture.
Okay, so we went to, um, a dairy production.
Yes.
Yeah, and, um, the owner started from ground zero and he now is talking into like he's a very successful dairy operation with cheese producers and like, he talked to us a lot about like how he started and I thought it was like really inspirational because he was like a very like businessman, but like it was very cool to see like how he started and I was, I was like talking to him about.
What did he, what did he say I told him?
This is my farm, go get your own.
It was really cool to see like, they don't know what to do, like, no, they don't do it anyway anymore, like the cows rotate themselves and I, um, it was like they were low or like they weren't getting enough milk out of their milk tanks. They started to cooperate during the feed, which made them like eat even more, which made it pretty fun.
And this was a robotic dairy, so if they had two cows that you'd go into them after a tiny necky going when they want to, it's not like you're forcing them to go in.
And like, and then now the number one, um, operating is. And like their main focus is to like take care of the cows and like what they're feeling. So they have like, what they had like a, for like to track if they're like getting sick or something. So like. Oh, they had collars on them so that they could track like, they could track their ovulation cycles with them. So they knew that they were being horse cats, that they were ovulating so that they can breed them on that day.
There, there was a lot of technology in there. Those cows, they use that collar, they would walk into a stenchion and it would scan that collar. And if it was time for that cow to milk, she could go in. And then while she was being milk, she got some sweet glasses feed. And they said they had a heifer and when they were first trying to get her, uh, to go into the milking stenchion, she went through a hundred and sixty times in an hour. And it just said, nope, deny, nope, deny. And when it comes back to actually being her turn to be milked, then she can go in and they will let her in the stenchion. Then this power washer comes along, washes everything off. Um, robotics reach out and grab the teats and attach some milkers. Um, it was kind of hard to see because everything's got, they've got glass windows, but you know, everything on the outside is dairy related, so they're not exactly clean. But they had a great big, um, viewing area upstairs where you could look down on the cows. Um, they had a big old little robot that swept the feet. Yeah, it would go along like once an hour and it would roll the feet back up against the bump. Um, everything was automatically flushed out the system, um, so the cows were always in a clean area. They bedded them in sand. Why?
Cause it's more comfortable.
They're standing on concrete all day long. Um, his big point was you gotta take care of the cows so that they'll take care of you. And they tracked milk production of every cow, um, had the number one Jersey producing cow for like three years in a row. Um, watched the genetics off of her and were able to breed her to a very superior bull and offspring, which then gave them another cow that milked high. Um, he was, it was awesome to stand and talk to him.
Now I wanted to be the best, anything we did.
And the cheese was good too.
And then we went through the Indianapolis Zoo and we had like, um, free fun. And we cooked electric scooters there, which, um, Ella had a little red, I'll hold it, but it's pretty fun other than that. But, um, the zoo was pretty cool. It was a pretty big one. We got us some dolphins, aprons, apes. Yeah, flamingos. You guys did pet kangaroos. I think you don't know what that one is.
He was watching it.
That's pretty cool.
So we got to go visit the National Ethic Day Center and they had a lot of history, uh, ethically out there. And then on that picture in the bottom right corner, you can see where we are and what you're on the, hold on.
Our state.
State was there. Understate was started.
Um, and history of the past, Ethic Day legends. It has a lot of old jackets in there. They have the National Ethic Day Officers there up the building and the sweetheart jacket, which the sweetheart jacket is from before women during Ethic Day.
We had the opportunity to go to the Indianapolis 500 track. And we got to like go in a tour bus and go around the whole track. And they like had a online tour going on throughout the whole thing to like explain in different parts of the track and what you could see out like your windows and stuff. And then there's the brick yard, which is just the bricks on the ground and like stuff like that. And then there's also a museum with a bunch of like old cars from when like people would drive them.
The brick there is actually the original brick, the first original race track that was originally there. So it's like the top of it.
The whole thing used to be bricks. They've since paved over it, but they still have a, a storeroom somewhere, this guy said, that has some of the original bricks so that if one of them cracks or breaks in the actual brick strip, they can go in there and replace it.
Um, we got to Indianapolis, we went to Popco. Um, we had dinner there and played golf and games. It's pretty much just a golf simulator.
It was super good to bonding that got us to spend time as a chapter together and play some games.
So we went to the first general session at the National Ethic Day Convention. And if I can mention, there are seventy-one thousand Ethic Day members who guessed that attended and they had keynote speakers, who was R. Johnson. And he had three main points and challenges for like all the people at the stands. And they were, don't be scared to destroy your box. Do you unapologetically and always give up mainly for stuff? And I thought that it was really cool just like seeing how like he's done all these things and like how far he's came from like giving himself these challenges to give benefit to other people.
That hundred, or that seventy-one thousand people were the, the people in that session are pretty close to what was in that session. There was a over a hundred thousand registered at National Convention. Um, the sessions are held in Lucas Oil, those gold plate, um, because they need that much space to get everybody in there.
That's seven one thousand, they probably fairly probably felt hot with that, so.
They have two escalators, seats, so we didn't show up right on time and going up to us like it's a little high, it's a little scary.
You guys have to sit in a certain place or can be somewhere.
You can sit wherever, but if you want to sit like lower than that, you really got to show up early. You can get good seats.
It was really cool like looking off, cause we were like up towards the top of the people and like looking off and seeing like everyone in their blue quarter jackets, like that all matched. It was just really cool to see that many people that are all in this. Um, we went to a workshop while we were there and it was the leaders of this. And that was probably like a short shop I haven't been to. I think everybody was coming with me. But like, it was more of like a bonding workshop and we got like, uh, forty, like forty different activities that we did. And, um, as you can see at the top, we had to make a human pyramid. So we were just running around the room.
And we won, we won the one shot out of all the teams.
Great show, it's last of all. Um, this is really cool to see like so many other people and the blue jacket and stuff. My first favorite was seeing the New Deal, of course. Um, but just seeing all the other, uh, like they see everything, which is amazing. It's how many people were there. So.
Also we have the dairy expo on the bank and we can go visit colleges and talk to, a lot of different colleges come to it and it's pretty cool to just get to see. Texas, Louisiana, just talk to them, visit our colleges.
So I guess traveling and thinking about this place of thirty-six hours in total. On the way there, it took us three days and on the way back, it took us two days, three days. So it's because we did a lot of tours and a lot of people sweat on the time.
So we had a catching nap every now and then too.
This is why I go.
We have cheesecake factory.
It's pretty good. Got to get on a lot of different cool places, all scraped in.
I think it's nice for kids, especially for me, like to go and, uh, see some of those nicer restaurants. Cheesecake factory was great. It's about twenty-five, thirty minutes away from the convention hall. And so you can kind of get away from some of the traffic and get in and eat someplace nice. Of course, a lot of the people that were there, they know the details of that too, but. And then there was a machine shed we ate at when we were in, that was in Cedar Rapids, Iowa, maybe. Um, it was, it was really good food. It was actually recommended to us by the, the dairy producer. If you were going into town, eat wherever you go, he goes machine shed. Huh? Come on. We tried it. It was good food.
Mr. Whitney assigned us to scavenger hunt a share of place we were missing in the classroom for his classes while he was on. And there were like different things that we had to take pictures of or like, so like we had to get pins from different colleges and like vendors and information about colleges. Take a picture with the Ethic Day Way, just like random stuff that like were at conventions that you had to actually report. So just like seeing them and not really taking the time to learn about them.
When Indianapolis was built, it's like a center hub and then everything kind of goes out around it. So there's a big circle in it and the streets going everywhere. There's actually a museum in there and it's probably twelve, thirteen blocks from our hotel. That was one of the things on the scavenger hunt, but it's, uh, not meant to, I mean, it's meant to fulfill the day, but not to worry how we do so.
So what was the cost at the end of it? I can't read from here. There's a really terrible.
Sorry, bad color.
I can come up here. So there was nine students and two adults that went. So in total for the students, it was five hundred and fifty-three dollars and sixty-five cents per person. And for adults, it was one thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty-five cents. And the reason it was more expensive for adults is because each one of them had their own hotel room where the students got to comply. So for parking at Uber, it was seven dollars and twenty-seven cents. For food, it was eighty-five dollars and eight cents. For convention registration, it was a hundred and ten dollars. And for the tours we got to go on, it was twenty-eight dollars and thirty, or twenty-three cents. And then those are the hotel costs throughout our trip and for fuel.
We took sixteen kids, oh, sorry, fourteen kids and two advisors from Mile City. Um, two adults and eight kids from Broadus on our activity bus. And so the fuel cost gets distributed among everybody, which really helps us bring our fuel cost down. Um, that fuel cost, total fuel cost on there would have been divided by, well, eleven of us, but we have extra, we're able to divide by thirty-seven, which really, um, really, really helps bring that even bigger down. So they were great to follow. Other than somebody had to pee all the time.
So in conclusion, thank you so much for letting us call Indianapolis, Indianapolis, Nashville.
Hey, I forget your name.
Thank you all for sharing with us. It's really interesting.
I'm probably the only one that doesn't know everyone. Is it okay for them to say their names?
Oh, they should have introduced themselves.
It's not okay? I don't think so. I was wondering about that, so.
Well, if they sign up, we didn't sign them up before.
No.
Yeah, they can.
You can.
They were never, so they were never on camera for the meeting?
They're just hammering.
Nobody is stopping you from getting up and walking over there. Let me, let me make this as easy as I can.
I do appreciate all of you coming.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Interesting fact, I was the first girl to join Epiphany more in this district from Mount Broadus. And we still had the sweetheart contest at that time. Cause there was two girls that went and sweetheart.
Okay, we'll go to trustee reports. Um, I was wondering, uh, Stefan and Sam, you're on the policy committing.
Committee meeting.
If you would want to set a date for that and that will allow for any policies that anybody thinks we've reviewed to be gone over.
Are we doing it by handbook again?
I would.
Okay.
So that would, good.
No, you're talking, you're talking policy and handbook, what did you say?
Or just for policy.
Just policy, sorry. Handbooks are work sessions.
That's right. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
Understanding.
Like this monster would drive the way to this.
You can. We're gonna plug in.
Well, I have my, I brought mine. That's why I set up for you guys.
And then if anybody has any policies that they would like reviewed or anything, you can email it to these guys. Their school email.
I didn't hear.
They haven't. They're working on it.
I didn't. I didn't.
Cause our next meeting is December eighth. Is that right?
The second one.
So what about could we do the first week of December either the what about, our Monday is good for you?
Monday is the first.
The first? And then what time are you down for the five? It's four thirty, like. Like right after four thirty. You want to be five?
Four thirty on the first.
Everybody or just you two?
Just those two. Lucky ducks.
But if you have any policies, question, send me first.
Yes.
What day did you say?
December first.
At four thirty, does that work for you?
Yep.
My brain is drawing a blank as far as finance committee meeting.
Um, for elections.
Oh, yeah.
So election laws have changed. I mean, now it's a call for an election in December. You have to call for your election before December eleventh. And so if the finance committee can meet and just see where we're at, make sure we don't want to essentially run Luvies. And we can always call for everything and then cancel if we decide not to. We just have to call for the election the next year. So if we want to have that conversation at a time, we weren't prepared for December.
And where, where are we saying finance, what calendar is first?
There is an actual finance meeting.
Oh, there is.
Yeah.
I think it's, I think it's Lisa and Stefan and then.
Cause it's the CBA.
Oh, I think, I think it is right now.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought it got traded to something else. Oh, it is.
Lisa, Lisa Arena, Stefan.
So we need to do that before when?
Before the board meeting also. You're good.
It's the summer first one.
I mean, go from one to the other. What time do you get done before?
I get done at four. So we were gonna do our, uh, policy at four thirty.
We do ours at four thirty? Cause it'll be really short, won't it?
I would think the finance will, I guess it depends how many policies and policy committees are you, but yes, I would say it's gonna be really short.
Forty and then five.
So we'll do ours at five and you guys do finance.
Is that okay?
Yeah. I'm fine. Stefan's fine. Or you could do one at four. I can't be here at four. Maybe you guys can. You can do your five. I guess it's okay.
You're done at four? Okay, let's do, do you want to do a four and four?
Sure.
The first.
We'll just set it for four.
And I'll be like five minutes, like two, I'll be like four thirty-five on the four.
You're fine.
What?
Say it now.
Sawyer has a doctorate in white. I thought the first.
Okay.
The second or the third.
I'd rather do the third than the second.
Okay. The, the third would actually be great. I can make the third work.
Okay.
Yeah.
Or Dave.
It must be a Wednesday.
It is a Wednesday.
Wednesday. Okay. Okay.
Anything else, Helen?
Okay. Is there any other trustee reports?
Um, did you want us to talk about just the daycare committee meeting we had? Just an overview? Yeah, and anybody can contribute. So we had a daycare meeting. Um, and they discussed kind of where the finances are. The fund for daycare, it's sitting fairly well right now. Um, salaries were discussed and we looked at the matrix. Talked about, there's toys in equipment that's outside that's been damaged, um, from like kids playing on it during games. Um, so we agreed that they could order locks for those gates and the toy box outside. Maybe find a spot in the school or like, um, storage somewhere for some of that so that it's not outside all winter long. And then we talked about some policies. So Carrie's working on policy and I believe it'll be on the December agenda for the board. I'll be board review in action. But other than that, it was a, it was a good option. So. Anything else? Superintendent report?
Okay, all right. So we had the ninth museum on November sixth. Um, and there was a, the author was in the building that day. We had a, a museum was full that night. So that was pretty, pretty fun and exciting. Um, as, as all things after school, some of those are challenging. But it was a, another good partnership with, with another community organization. They, the museum is great to work with. On twenty-third and twenty-fourth, we had our trainers here. And it was nice to have the high school, um, staff all together to, to make that happen. Uh, they have been working hard at that. Amy is our coordinator. She's been doing a great job with that. Um, our trainer, his name is Brad. He will be back in the village, uh, in December to actually be in the groups to help, help staff and work with staff. So kind of the, the benefit of all of that is working with staff, not telling staff what to do and whatnot. So that's been, that's been good. Um, SFA was here last week, success for all. And they were working with both the preschool, um, and Marissa as well as Melanie. And kind of laying out things as we kind, twofold, working with our kindergarten, kindergarten class especially, but pre-planning for implementation as we head into next year, which takes a lot of moving pieces to look at it. It, it stands right now that it looks like they're going to be doing training potentially right after we get out of school. And, uh, the SFA people were like, wow, that's a, we're just not used to that just because, um, in the comments were, well, there's no hay to be put up yet. There's no cow. I mean, they, they had all these reasons for it. They're like, most people want a little break after school, but okay, we, we can make it happen. Uh, so the intent there will be to get, get our staff fully trained so that they have all summer to kind of let that soak in and work through some things, getting ready for next year as well. Uh, thankful for parent invitation. So we have a cool opportunity going this, this month. Working with the, uh, uh, Tony in the grocery store down there. They have put some turkeys up. And so we are really, really working hard to get parents in the building this month, just to come in and spend time. And any teach, any parent that comes in and spends an hour, they just get a random ticket. We throw it in a bucket at the end of the, end of the month. We're gonna pull those tickets for a couple of turkeys for, or, um, all those parents that have came in that is elementary, high school, whatever we would. The more parents or community members we have in the building, seeing what's going on, the, the better that is because then uh, it's better to have the, have parents and community members talking about what's going on in the school and not just us telling them what's going on in the school. So that's kind of a, uh, exciting. We're excited about the grocery store jumping in to A, show that to help us get people in the building as well. Uh, graduate profile meeting is on November seventeenth. That'll be at five thirty. Lots of invitations event caught out for that. Uh, truly community wide invitation as far as if you live in this community, you should probably be at that. If you own a business, if you're a parent, if you're a grandparent, you have homeschool kids. If you have kids in our school, if you're a teacher, if you're, um, if you're breathing and care about education, you should probably be at that meeting, um, so that we can work through that. Uh, just that reminder to get that on the calendar. Donkey basketball will be January twenty-first. And so just get that up. Climbing wall is, if you come to the Veterans Day tomorrow, you will see that the climbing wall is essentially fully installed. The first class was on it, was, uh, second graders today. And they were pretty excited, just a, a couple of little pieces that have to be, uh, added, but nothing, nothing, uh, that's, that's big. Just some finishing touches, if you will, trim and whatnot. So pretty excited about that. Uh, and then you had a chance to just touch base with elementary teachers about ways that that can also be used in class. Um, we have lots of, as I, as I talked to you guys when we purchased it, it is magnetic behind it. And so we can, and whatever you think of, we can put on a magnetic, uh, piece of paper and put on that wall from math problems to studying to remembering counties or states or there's a lot of ways you can, can use it. And so, but it's up and, uh, it's pretty excited. Kids were pretty excited about that. Mass data gets released on the twelfth, which is, uh, two days from now. And, uh, that is our state testing data. The interesting part about that is, is it cannot be compared to the year before. So it's interesting data. It's like, it's like if you're thinking about zero, the year is zero, then that's what it is. It's this year is zero. It, it will give us a little bit of a comparison, looking somewhat of a comparison to testing before that, but it's not a direct correlation. And so you need a few years of, of data. But we will have cut scores on there. And so the, uh, a group of teachers around the state set those cut scores. And so we will at least be able to look at students and go based on that, that average, you know, where, where our kids at as far as that goes. So, uh, we will, I'll have a more detailed report about that on the next board meeting. But just want you guys to be aware of it, that that will come out on, on the twelfth. Tax credit, um, just getting, it's, it seems like it's a little ways away, but it's not. Um, tax credit is middle of January. They've not officially listed their date, but it will be January fifteenth, eighteenth, seventeenth, some, one of those days. And that tax credit, um, that we worked hard on last year, we will have the same conversations this year. Um, if, if the dollars that people gave to us as far as their tax credit was what their tax bill was, then hopefully we can capture that same amount again. If it was more, uh, that tax credit, remember rolls over four, five years that they have before they have to, three, that they can use it up. So if they overpaid us, they, they might still have, but there's still a fair amount. With that being said, um, have been working diligently with ExxonMobil to kind of get them on board. Uh, because of, of the hundred thousand dollars for that innovative tax credit catcher captured last year, we did not capture one energy company. And so we have been continually asking, working, trying to find the right people, um, which means it's not only the right person, but then you've got to get to their business office. So, um, if, if they pay income tax in the state of Montana, period, then, then they can use that money for that tax credit. And so we're gonna, we're gonna keep chipping away at it. And we think the people that were involved in last year at least have a really good understanding of it. So it allows us to educate more. So, I mean, the moral of the story is if you pay income tax, yeah, you might as well pay it to the school and get that tax credit and then we at least control it, um, in that sense. The last thing I'll throw in there, there was a date thrown out a, a little while ago, but it got shifted. So the fourth, since the December third, December fourth will be the holiday stroll. Um, uh, there's basketball the next two nights, um, two days of tournament. But that December fourth will be the holiday stroll and the theme is the Grinch or Grinch all Christmas or or that. So, yeah.
I have a question on bar and successful.
Sure.
So this year, so just have a better understanding. You guys are training this year and then you will implement it next year? Or how does that work?
Two different, two, kind of like a whole lot of answers on this one. So success for all is just being implemented in our kindergarten and our priest, and not our preschool, but the preschool, because we wrote the grant to involve the preschool. So it will go from K all the way through, up through seven, eight. Um, but the focus is K through six and they will be fully implemented next year. So bar is, um, we are starting right now. We, our staff is working through the to not let us totally go down a huge rabbit hole that, so every week, the, there are teams in the staff. There are two teams that meet and go through student data. And that student data includes a lot of different things from, um, attendance to grades to missing assignments, to behavior things that are jumping out at them. And they are meeting every week, talking about those and trying to get out in front of students as fast as they can. And so the first staff, they're called small block meetings. The first, um, small block meeting was today. And so group, for lack of a fun name, group one. Group one met today and group two will meet on Thursday. And then every, every week they are, are, are working through that. That other piece of that is there is, uh, an activity called UTIME that is those, um, for Lisa and Rena when they were there. But those are the activities that staff does with the kids, and they are very. Oh, kind of like what what the FFA was talking about, but they're very. Relationship oriented in the sense of getting to know. The kids, kids getting to know staff, the kids getting to know each other. And so that is starting right now. And I guess I'll throw one of the pieces, the the elementary is working through. They had the full information from them, but they're, they're kind of picking and choosing right now as because they haven't been, they haven't been trained. And so they're trying to get it in front of them, so they're comfortable.
Thank you. Have you invited specific people to the graduate profile?
I've invited the world. I mean, I I say that jokingly, but I mean, I put out, I sent out an invitation to the Chamber of Commerce. I attached our entire staff. I, I mean, I've seen it on Facebook. I I've sent it out to all of our our parents in a message to on Infinite Campus. Yeah, I mean, I've put it, we'll put it in the, we'll put it in the newspaper as well for next week. But. I've I've specifically just asked like some, like I asked Daryl at the at the hospital to help make the hospital staff aware. Just try to make businesses aware to let their employees know that. Just because you don't have kids or your kids are almost a graduation, or any of the above, come and join that conversation.
It's not having graduates, there would be. Kids that are adults that have already graduated.
Oh, for sure. I mean, anybody. That'd be a great, I mean, that's a great group that. I don't know if we can get them just a specific invitation, but for sure.
I, does anybody have any comments on any of the other reports? Questions? If not, we will move on to public comments or requests for proposals.
So good news, mixed news, we'll wait and find out what the actual real news is. But the, after the first insurance estimate came through, we, they came back and looked at the building again. And they had not looked at the high school at all. And so they came back and looked at the high school specifically with. I mean, I'll just say the the way it was explained to us, much more trained adjusters, if you will. And they pulled ceiling, they cut the fabric on the, on the high school, peeled it back, looked at different things. They also looked at every other building we have as far as the elementary, they looked at the houses, they looked at all of that again and went through all of that. There is significant damage on the high school roof. There is potentially, there is damage on the elementary roof, but the question is still being determined whether it's cosmetic. Or if it's actual damage. So with that, we are waiting, two parts to this, we're waiting for the the full. Insurance report coming back to us to say. Yes, there's damage on the high school. What is that? What will they give us for that? It is kind of a mute point that we are in the process of replacing the roof on the high school, because it was damaged before that was done. And so with that, we will. Kind of what that also involves going through, McKinstry was here during that time, and they would like to. Potentially look at the full scope of the issue as well. And either because they're going to be here, they're going to be on sites, they're going to be managing all this other stuff. They potentially would put in a bid for some of the other stuff. That does not mean they will be doing, say, the roof on the house. They may be subcontracting that out, but. The good side of that, the bad side, I mean, whatever you want to look at, the good side is. It brings the price, potentially brings the price down, but it also gives us a project manager. That doesn't mean we have to be. Trying to figure out if they did the siding right or the roof right, that there's somebody that that's their level of expertise. So we're waiting to see what that dollar amount is. That dollar amount could be five thousand dollars. It could be five hundred thousand dollars. And at that point, that's a a different conversation as far as how, what we do, how we manage that insurance money as well.
So in December, you guys will have a full new request for the proposal scope approved. So the one that went out back out in the paper is not accurate, so that at this point is void. Because of the other damage that was found. So we will wait and repost the full scope in December.
And and it won't change the timeline that we we discussed as far as end of the school year, getting on it, those things.
We just will have any other fixes for the fall, like the two bridges and how that was building to happen.
So we can just move on and don't need to do anything.
Well, I have a question. Oh, sorry.
Should we put like a little sticky note, like you've got seven? Use two, you're up.
Just so I'm understanding correctly, another adjuster came out and relooked at it, just somebody with more experience.
Yeah, they sent, they flew people out from Spokane.
Okay, because it's just such a large, I mean, is there so much to look at or?
So the way that I always explain to it is the adjusters are like a general adjuster, so they come out of the mouse. Some things, anyways. So when they found out it wasn't specifically the roofs, especially, they sent, I think, a general out and a roof guy out. So we had two guys here from out of state. And that's when they actually peeled back, looked at the other layer, because it's never the actual top of the roof that's broken. It's the shit underneath what actually holds. And so when that gets damaged, the way we were explaining, it's kind of like she dropped it. Eventually will like break apart and whatever over time. The outside looks great, but it's the underlying, but that's why they had to peel it all back. So it was an actual roofing guy that was here.
It was like full binoculars laying on the roof looking. I mean, like a monocular, it was, it was something.
Now, is this the same company that's doing the floor and the?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
So he was on site, so Tyler was here, not Bob that came to present last time, but our, who was going to be our project manager was on site with those guys. And they were a big part of what it could potentially cost, because they already put together a bid for the replacement. So he's been working very closely with the insurance and having conversations, which is saving the insurance time also.
Thank you. Any other questions? Move to new business, chaperone additions.
The Kennel Club has been working really, really hard to get parents involved. Part of that requirement is we want parents to be fingerprinted so that they're. They are in a in a spot where they are by chance alone with kids. And so those three are the three latest additions to the Kennel Club lists. That we'd like to have available on the school to help do all sorts of fun stuff.
I don't know the middle one. Is she a parent?
Yep.
She is. She's got four kiddos in the school.
Is there any board comment? Is there any public comment? Public comment? I guess you don't even know, we're taking Matt Wanita Burn, Audrey VanderWalt, and Mindy. Okay. Is there any other board comment or? Stefan made a motion to approve the chaperone additions as presented. Sam, second motion. Is there any public comment? Comment? Stefan made the motion to approve the chaperone addition as presented. Sam, second the motion. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Plus, certified hire.
So we were in the process, we needed a halftime. Aid, because we have a halftime para that is in the building on Tuesday, Thursday, based on recommendation from Mr. Ford. So we looked at hiring an aide to cover a part-time aide for Monday, Tuesday. In that conversation, our person that is in the lunchroom as the assistant cook. Is going to be having some surgeries done and out a little bit. And just the pure standing time of being in there. She, we, we visited with her, but then it was felt that that would be a much better role for her. And she was excited about that. She drives a a bus route for us. So we are going to, the recommendation is to move her into that position, well, in that spot. We also had a person come in that was willing to, wants to be part of the school. Olivia Pearson, and so we interviewed her, and Wanda and I sat down with her. And went through the kitchen, looked at different things, just to see if, what we thought of, if she would be willing and able and a good fit. And and she, I do not know her connection. She lives out on the Hammond Road and her boyfriend, I don't know who the family is.
I don't think you're probably.
Yeah, no, no, but I'm sure you all know who that is. But I would say, anyway, that, so we would like to have her in the kitchen. She seems like a great asset that could be a good person.
I didn't know her by Olivia. She goes by Lip.
And then just having, adding Amy Neese to our. List as as possible for substitute, just on those times, we've also had her fingerprinted, so.
Any board comment? Any public comment? Public comment? Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the classified hires as presented.
Mike moved to approve the classified hires as presented. Thiebys second motion. Is there any public comment? Public comment? Mike made the motion to approve the classified hires as presented. Thiebys second motion. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Certified hire.
Okay. So we started the year, we, Ms. Lovelace, we had a conversation with her at the beginning of the year about what. Actually end of last year, about what her future would be with the district is, as far as whether she wanted to stay in a classified position. She has has worked towards her, she went to college to be a teacher. And she ended up the way life plays out. She did not finish, was within. Unfortunately, she was very close, but, you know, being very close twenty years ago shifts things as you move fast forward twenty years. So as we ventured into this year, I I had some good conversations with her as far as trying to understand where she was. Retirement, family, all sorts of things, just trying to figure out what she wanted to do, because first and foremost. To go down the path of an emergency authorization, she has to be looking at. Continuing and and gaining her teaching degree and going through that. And it's not quite as easy as just take a class because you you almost had it. And so she explored that possibility and has been filed her paperwork with the state to get her emergency authorization. So we sat down, we looked at the schedule, as far as what does that schedule look like during the day. So she is currently in charge of a classroom in the afternoon. And so she is working on lesson plans, working on those things in the morning. She is working with, specifically with Ms. Spencer in that, in our group with our, with our third, fourth, and fifth. And so it it, in in the world of, you know, what what is she doing, what is she earning, what are all those pieces? It is, it's it's definitely what she's doing. She's teaching in the afternoon. And so she has her emergency authorization, so she's currently at that spot. And so I would recommend that we move her for the last two, last three quarters of the year. From this point forward into a part-time, into that part-time teaching position in the afternoon. So she'll be in the morning, she'll be paid as a para in the afternoon, she'll be paid as. As as a teacher, because she'll be certified.
So with that, because I believe right now Ms. Spencer, she's creating all the lesson plans or doing the book, is that correct? Because.
She's creating the bulk of the, I mean, she's creating the reading in the morning.
Okay, so would that shift a little bit of that workload?
For sure, but in fairness to to Lena, she's been doing a lot of that. I mean, under the guidance of 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 having conversations with Carol and Kendall and working through that.
Can our budget support this change?
Yeah.
I would say yes.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
I really wish that that certified hiring people would come in and introduce themselves. Because for those of us who live so far, I mean, I tried to get to as much as I can, but I just don't know people. So it would be nice if, if they could come in, but. It sounds like a good, good band.
Is there any public comment? Public comment? Any other board comment or motion?
I move to approve Lena as a halftime certified teacher for fiscal year twenty six.
Sam moved to approve that Lena. Moved to approve Lena as a halftime certified teacher for fiscal year twenty six. Stefan second the motion. Is there any public comment? Public comment? Sam made the motion to approve Lena as a halftime certified teacher for fiscal year twenty six. Stefan second the motion. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. We all sat down and worked on the. Super container fridge here. Leekalaka. I mean, that's how a lot of people say it.
I must start typing Lena's name and then know my person was.
I don't think there's anything to discuss with it, really. We. Didn't nail down a date to go out. We looked at the calendar, and we thought that next week, before Thanksgiving, would be a good time for it to go out. To be open that week and then it'll close.
And how long will it be open for, Lisa?
I thought it was open those four school days. That was my thought, but.
And then for students, did we talk about just one?
A day, yeah, but then if kids are absent.
Then just check.
Do that. Encourage them to do it.
Do November seventeenth through the twentieth, is that what we're saying?
Yeah.
You good with that?
Yeah.
What's a good attendance day?
That's what I was, I was actually looking at what was on the calendar and make sure that nobody was.
Monday is honor Claire. Amy says don't do Mondays.
Yeah, Monday, honor requires on, or not specific, honor requires on Monday. The party should be your best, because it's healthy to basketball. Or it'd be your best attendance day.
And then you can catch the others the next week.
Okay, on the twenty fourth, October.
Okay.
If you just did it two days and if they miss it, that's just how it is. Instead of bugging the office, it's either Wednesday, Thursday, if you miss it, it's kind of miserable to this. Just a thought.
Kids don't really want to do it, but we really want them to do it.
I feel like two days.
Or like Wednesday afternoon to Thursday afternoon, if they had like two homes to do it.
I mean, I'm I'm still, I mean, if you want kids' opinion, you've got to have kids' opinion. Once it goes home, you're gonna have, not just kids' opinion.
Let's do Thursday, and if it's not a big deal to catch. Let's do Thursday and if it's not a big deal to catch other kids, if it is, then we don't, you know. So the twentieth for students.
Is there a way? Google sheets doesn't lock us out, if they have it, it's on Gmail, does it? We think another platform that needs to be?
For which one?
For going away to the community and they should lock them out. You want to sit on the keyboard, I guess.
We don't have to, through, uh?
No. No, we're doing the contract and it says that you guys are going to do it, so it should.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other comments on that? Move to consent agenda.
Um, so on the board part, it's now going to live all the attachments from the meeting floor. So if there's any like large attachments that go to the minutes, they'll be here and I'll have them labeled by meeting. So if you guys are good with the format, if anybody wants to look in here, if you're specific about what you want to look like, if you will look now or before you go, and then if you're good with this, I will backtrack it to July and we'll, we'll have the attachments from the start of the fiscal year. So then that's why this will save some paper versus attaching it onto the minutes every time that we'll live in here and let us stay on the board part. So if everybody can look back at, like the history of big documents or some of those big ones, then I'll just be one.
Thank you, thank you for doing that. So when we look at so why isn't there dollar amounts for like student activities?
Because I didn't bring the formula over.
Okay, I'm like, has it always been that way?
So, no, after July, I remember I had to roll it. So September is when I finally closed a big account and so it shouldn't be out here now, but I just, I have a second page I do everything on and then all the formulas, the fee will sell on that page. So I just don't have like some type of, I will fix it. And I am still working with the gal to try to get my sales sense to actually work. Um, so this, again, hopefully this report will look definite at some point, she just didn't quite finalize that. But then that way it will show actually all the encumbrances. Like right now, if you look at like the general fund budget, it looks like there's seven hundred and twelve thousand dollars remaining, which is probably eighty-five to ninety percent of actually retired salaries. So I would like you guys to see a report of this. Salaries, utilities, all the encumbrances, audits, the things that know are coming at us, and you guys have a remaining amount that's not part of our plan, if that makes sense. We've not already spent.
So, okay. This is not being critical, she's not asking. What changed that the school is paying for fabric?
So we have in Montana, we have a student use grant, and we have to do it for parent costs. So the parent providing that grant has specifically been used or would have been a parent out of expense. And that's just a rolling grant, so we get to save them out every year.
Did you get to go up to the enchanted room and usually invite me? And she didn't invite me.
Next time. I told her I'd even drive her.
I, I've said to the student there, I said, go pick up fabric the other day, you definitely uh, you're going to call it.
That's the difference.
Okay.
We just got that locked here. Use it for dinners and.
Okay. I have a question on old business. Yeah, go for it. So when we talked about the rock wall initially and then insurance that it falls under our current policy, we had briefly talked about the waiver that's being used for the fitness center and if we needed to adjust that to include the rock walls. Since if somebody's using the gym, they would have that ability to use that just for, I didn't know. It's a, I mean, I think that would be, that's the board, I believe, because it's policy and maybe Stefan and I can look at that. But I don't know how that's going to work in between right now or how you will monitor who's using it and things like that, I guess, just to make sure we're, we're okay.
So um, on the wall, if you go in there, if you're here for the venue, you'll see it too. But on the wall, there are actual holds that straps go into that lock in place to put the path up on the wall. And so you have to have the key to unlock those, to lay those down.
Okay.
So until we either have open climbing or put that key somewhere, the general public would not have access to that yet. So until that decision is made, um, because I was, I was thinking through how that might look. Which I'm not sure, just purely open, like everybody can just come in and climb is the best option. So yeah, there's, we have a way to lock it down right now.
I know we had talked about it and I can't remember the verbiage of the waiver right now and if that would fall. You know, because it's in the facility, so, or if that's something that just needs to be added.
That there's that specific of the verbiage in the fitness center, it would maybe just need to be added to like our safety walkthrough if we do have something. Because right now we have a whole safety walkthrough that we go through with them.
Yep.
Not necessarily how to use it, but it just kind of everything is and what you should properly do.
Sure.
I could see it being added to there for sure. Or if we just, does it think considering times, making sure we have that, so the rules that they take from them.
Okay, thank you. All right, I have one more thing, I was meant to tell you earlier today to save on time, but it, um, why is electricity, why is like ninety plus dollars out of the rental fund and ten dollars out of the gym?
It shouldn't be split anymore. That's a good catch. Um, okay, you're talking Southeast Electric, so there's grade school, maniacs, grade school.
It's the two superintendent ones.
It shouldn't, it should all come out of one fund.
Okay.
So it means that line got straight back on. So we use this for the half and half, because it's half, grade school, we used to be half grade school, half high school, but now that we have a rental fund that's supporting all these buildings that are other property.
Is there any other discussions, questions? Any public comment? Public comment? Any board comment or motion? Please second. Mike moved to approve the consent agenda, the second motion, is there any public comment? Public comment? Mike made the motion to approve the consent agenda, the second motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
As a reminder, there are notes on every staff member's door, stop there. Drop a note on those staff members. I move to adjourn.
Good job. Getting stern.